Barbara Barlow, Senior Staff Attorney, Disability Rights New York, and Marcus Harrison, Coordinator Patient Advocates Program for the New York Statewide Senior Action Council.
Hey, and do each and every one of you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is true?
Yes.
I do.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, Ms. Catherine Hansons, please lead us off.
On behalf of the Center for HIV Law and Policy, I thank you for powering through, as Senator Rivera mentioned, and for the opportunity to testify today.
Pandora, you need to go to your zone.
I'm hearing your voices. Should I continue?
You should absolutely continue.
The COVID epidemic has laid bare what many New Yorkers living on the margins already knew, that in times of crisis and hot decisions about who gets what care do not produce equitable access to life-saving services. Assemblymember Kim's earlier questions about the many requests for guidance from the Department of Health, I think, are completely on point. When the call was for guidance on ventilator access and emergency triage, Commissioner Zucker refused to respond. New York's guidance on ventilator distribution during pandemics has serious gaps and is insufficient to protect the lives of people with disabilities. They address only the allocation of ventilators, which are not the only form of essential care. COVID-19 patients living with disabilities need assurances of equal access to other respiratory therapies, medications, critical care beds, and staff time, which current guidance fails to protect. Professional hospital associations use the occasion of a major epidemic to pursue legislation giving them near total exemption from any form of liability, which I think is an odd priority in view of the massive medical mistrust common among many people of color who were disproportionately affected by this. New Yorkers need assurances that in times of scarcity, laws that prevent discrimination on the basis of age, disability, race, and gender will apply to the provision of critical health care. The right time to fix protections for vulnerable New Yorkers during an emergency is before that emergency arises and ensure that the resulting policy is comprehensive and includes input from all stakeholders. The fact that New York avoided a ventilator rationing crisis during the first wave of COVID-19 is no reason to not act with urgency to fix this now. Indeed, it is likely that we will again confront serious resource allocation issues through either a COVID-19 resurgence or another lethal virus in the near future. Seeing no buy-in or action from Commissioner Zucker, we propose that the legislature consider legislation such as codifying these rights, the rights to be free from discrimination in the existing Hospital Patients' Bill of Rights. Individuals must have confidence that when they enter hospitals, they will not have personal ventilators taken away or otherwise be discriminated against due to disability, age, or other disfavored identities. And finally, the legislature should repeal Article 30D of the Public Health Law, immunizing healthcare facilities from liability. This Emergency Disaster Treatment Protection Act drastically limits liability standards to the point that it is essentially insulating hospitals and their executive leadership from criminal or civil liability. Stripping patients and family members of the ability to hold hospitals accountable for civil rights violations and other harm is just not appropriate. Pandemic should not be used as a basis to encourage hospitals to put aside basic standards of care, which, when followed, actually insulate against liability. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hansons, followed up by Jessica Barlow from the Senior Staff Attorney for Disability Rights New York.
Hi, thank you. My name is Jessica Barlow. I am a senior staff attorney at Disability Rights New York. DRNY is the Designated Protection and Advocacy System for New York State. The PNA system was created in the 1970s as a result of media coverage, which showed the horrific abuse and neglect of children and adults with disabilities at the Willowbrook School on Staten Island. DRNY provides free legal and advocacy services to people with disabilities in New York State, and we also monitor congregate care facilities to ensure that those living in those facilities are not abused or neglected. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you about how the COVID-19 pandemic has impacted the people that DRNY serves. Today, I will be focusing on medical rationing and its impact on the disability community, and in particular, I'd like to discuss ventilator rationing at acute care facilities. In November of 2015, the New York State Task Force on Life and the Law and the New York State Department of Health published their ventilator allocation guidelines in order to provide guidance on how to ethically allocate limited resources, ventilators during a severe pandemic while saving the most lives. As has been said, these guidelines contain serious gaps, which discriminate against people with pre-existing disabilities and in particular, individuals who are chronic ventilator users. The guidelines explicitly state that a chronic ventilator user who lives in the community and goes to an acute care facility during a pandemic, like the current one, can have their personal ventilator reallocated to another individual. The guidelines acknowledge that this may place ventilator-dependent individuals in a difficult position of choosing between life-sustaining ventilation and urgent medical care, and this is exactly the situation that DRNY's clients are in. And it's not a difficult position. It's an impossible and a terrifying one. I recently spoke to a woman who is currently self-isolating on Staten Island, but when the pandemic began, she was in New York City attending Columbia University, where she's currently pursuing her bachelor's degree in biology. She lives with a neuromuscular disease, which is not life-shortening, but does require chronic ventilator support. She cannot breathe on her own at all and uses a ventilator 24 hours a day. In the spring, at the beginning of the pandemic, she began to hear rumblings from classmates and other ventilator users about New York State's existing ventilator guidelines, and so she sought them out. She was horrified by what she read. She knew instantly if she was to contract COVID-19, she would not be able to seek a care in an acute medical facility without risking being forcibly extubated. The guidelines specifically contemplated taking her personal ventilator away from her and giving it to someone else. Since this woman became a chronic ventilator user more than 15 years ago, she never lets her ventilator out of her or her family's sight for this exact reason. Even prior to the pandemic and even prior to these guidelines, she and her family have experienced hospitals attempting to discharge her to skilled nursing facilities instead of back into the community with her personal ventilator. She has always lived in fear of being institutionalized, but now she also lives in fear of needing medical care at all. The guidelines tell her that if she needs acute care during the COVID-19 pandemic, she cannot seek that care. Should she go to a hospital, she will be forcibly extubated, and her ventilator will enter a pool of ventilators to be allocated according to triage procedures. Her personal ventilator will be given to someone else who is deemed more likely to survive with a higher quality of life. These fears are shared by countless other individuals who are contacting our office every day and who are chronic ventilator users. This is part of a national debate, and in an effort to address these concerns, DRNY and other organizations and even individuals have filed complaints with OCR. In many other states, these complaints have reached amicable resolutions that address the issues regarding rationing personal ventilators. But despite the pending claim, New York State's Department of Health is unwilling to contemplate a revision to its policy. DOH states that this is just guidance, that hospitals don't need to follow this, and it's not an official rule, but the response from hospitals is essentially, how do we not follow these guidelines when there's nothing else for us to follow and we're facing an unprecedented crisis of life and death? Everyone seems to be pointing fingers at each other when there is a community of people that needs help and answers. So it is DRNY's recommendation that the ventilator allocation guidelines be reviewed and that these concerns be kept in mind. The Task Force on Life and Law failed to even consider providing guidance that would not, under any circumstances, allow for a chronic ventilator user to be removed from their ventilator without another device being readily available for their use, and that is the only acceptable approach. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Barlow. Next, we will hear from Marcus Harrison. I hope that that's the correct pronunciation of your name, sir. Coordinator Patient Advocates Program for the New York Statewide Senior Action Council.
Good afternoon. Thank you for inviting statewide to speak today. We run a state-funded Patients' Rights Helpline and the CMS-funded Senior Medicare Patrol Program to Prevent Fraud. With a limited time that I have today, I want to talk about a couple of recommendations, specifically in the area of patients' rights. Just as we learned during the recent hearings that most citizens' knowledge about rights, like the access to the Long-Term Care Ambudsman Program, are very limited. Most people don't know that there's a Bill of Rights. So when someone is waiting until someone's in the hospital to educate them about their rights is really too late. So really, really feel that now is an important time to kind of go back and look at the Bill of Rights and look at how the state is educating communities about these rights, especially the vulnerable elderly population. The pandemic playbook called for the suspension of many rights in order to sustain the health of the general public. Some were really good, like dropping the three-day stay requirement for post-acute rehab, but many were counterproductive. That's especially true for older adults, who use five times as much acute care as other adults. Those rights include removing, explaining why patients were being removed from a bed, provision of a copy of the medical record, patient visitation rights, and seclusion. We know that family visitation can be very helpful in the process of recovery, but we know that patients now know how to do this. No one should be without someone to have social contact with. New York should convene a group to develop pandemic visitation protocols and policies that could be built into pandemic plans. The religious views of the patient must be honored, even during the pandemic. For example, during last rites, the Jewish ritual of washing over a body of a deceased person from the time of death until burial should be honored. Also, the state needs to revise the compassionate care visitation rules, visitation at the end of life. Communication with families is paramount. Multicultural and non-English-speaking families really need to be provided with information they can understand. There are models out there on how to do that better. Too many patients were treated without the family knowing which hospital they were in or facility they were in, and patients died unidentified. We need to keep families informed as to where the patient is, and the state needs a patient tracker system. Discharge planning regulations were also waived. As the United Hospital Fund noted in their recent reports about post-acute care and COVID, we need to reinstitute many of the discharge planning requirements, including allowing families to develop care plans that meet their preferences, providing information about care in the community so they can make an informed decision, and clarifying for families and caregivers about their freedom to pick a provider of choice and of coverage for that post-acute care. It's also important to provide them with information that they have a contact within the hospital while they're being bumped from place to place, and their right to appeal their discharge or complain about the quality of care. This is particularly important since surveys from the Joint Commission were suspended during COVID. This has been a wake-up call for health and disaster planning. It's a time, it's been really been, over time, there's been an insidious drift away from community-based planning to top-down planning. That's why the governor abandoned the modus operandi and called upon hospitals to work together. We believe it's time to go back to the future and establish regional healthcare planning, kind of like what we used to use during the health systems agencies. We also recommend that more consumer representation is needed on the Public Health and Health Planning Council, and that CON reviews need to be expanded to include the Attorney General when mergers and consolidations and sales are involved. We strongly support the Community Voices for Health Systems Accountability was calling for the cessation of hospital closures and mergers and the need for community impact assessments. We need to engage the community in healthcare planning. Disaster plans need to be functions-based and have a whole community perspective, and those are disaster planning terminologies. And there are some great frameworks out there that, in part, New York State helped develop, that are available to help walk states through how to do this. In closing, we want to thank you for narrowing the waiver of liability for hospitals. Really, the ability to register quality-of-care complaints and seek legal measures to address poor care are critical parts of this system of checks and balances, and we look forward to working with you to create solutions and action rather than blame and excuses. And thank you for your work here today.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Now the Assembly will lead us off.
We will start with our Health Chair, Mr. Richard Goffrey. Five minutes. Okay. Question for Ms. Barlow on the question of a person who has their own ventilator. Are you saying that the guidelines contemplate taking that person's ventilator away and leaving them lying there without a ventilator? Or is the issue that their ventilator would be part of a pool, and the ventilator that they use might be a different one from the one they brought with them?
So kind of both. So first of all, it is fairly common, in my understanding, that if a chronic ventilator user goes to a hospital during a non-rationing period, it's very likely that they would be transferred to a hospital ventilator as opposed to their own personal ventilator. The reason we usually hear for that is that the hospital staff is trained to use a particular type of ventilator, and for liability reasons, they don't want to be messing with someone's personal ventilator. But the first part of your question is true. In a ventilator rationing situation, should a person who's a chronic ventilator user enter an acute care facility, an emergency room, during a rationing period, and their ventilator becomes fair game for the pool of ventilators? And so the triage procedures are used to determine whether someone else is more deserving, is more entitled under those triage procedures to that ventilator. So it is essentially no longer that person's property. It becomes a ventilator in the pool to be reallocated to someone else, which could, if there are not enough ventilators, leave the individual who entered with the ventilator without a ventilator at all.
I think it would be helpful if, certainly to me, if you and Catherine Hansons and anyone else could identify exactly where that language is in the guidelines or anything else. Because I haven't seen it, and it strikes me as not the sort of thing I ever have seen in New York law. So I think if you can point to that language and not just say, well, it's in the book, but show us where in the book that is, that would be helpful. And do you think if a hospital's personnel feel that they are untrained in using a particular variety of ventilator, but are trained in using a different, I don't know, brand that does essentially the same thing, is that a problem? Wouldn't you want the hospital staff using the equipment that they have been trained on and know how to work?
Absolutely. First, to your first point, I would be glad to have my office send over the guidelines with the particular portions that we believe state that a personal ventilator can be reallocated, highlighted. Or I can point to it here. I'm not sure. Everyone probably doesn't have the guidelines in front of them, so it probably wouldn't be helpful for me to share page numbers right now.
Where to find it?
Regarding training with ventilators, it's my understanding that, and I am not a medical professional, I'm an attorney. So it's my understanding that generally, most medical professionals could use basically any type of typical ventilator, besides maybe a homemade one, which is something that the ventilator community is actually working on, coming up with their own. So in rationing situations, they would have something to work with. But it's from what we've heard, hospitals tend to have a preference in a best-case scenario, where we're not in a rationing situation, that this is the one they're most familiar with. But I would imagine that's probably goes for a lot of different types of medical equipment in that this is what our hospital uses, this is the brand we use, this is the particular device that our hospital has. But in a situation where doctors and nurses are volunteering at other hospitals or traveling, it is my understanding that generally, they can use other types. But if there's a preference and that opportunity is there to choose, that they would choose the one that they have the most experience with.
Okay.
Yeah, if I could just add that I don't, the issue is not, the issue is more if there were six patients in need of a ventilator and five ventilators, including one that was brought in by a patient, how is the decision going to be made? And it's not an unprecedented problem. I think there was a--
You could finish your thought, ma'am, since the time has expired.
Oh, okay. I'll stop right there.
Okay, but you will both point out for us in this guidebook where the language is that concerns you?
The guidelines are extraordinarily long, even though they deal only with ventilator access. So it's understandable you might not have seen it, but absolutely.
I'll start my time. I'll recognize myself for five minutes and say that on behalf of my colleague, Dick Gottfried, you just, you tell him, no matter how long it is, he'll go and he'll look through it. So please let us know where those guidelines are so that we can look through them. If there's something that we need to change, then we will do so. My question is from Mr. Harrison, actually. Is that correct pronunciation of your name, first of all?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so you spoke about, I believe, certificate of need process and your suggestion that the Attorney General be brought into that process. Could you tell me a little bit more about what you mean by that?
Well, in many other states, other agencies are involved. Here in New York, we really don't do that. But when you're talking about the types of mergers and consolidations that are continuously going on, it's really important to kind of look at the overall picture in terms of the character competency and the financial connections and possible conflicts of interest that are involved in these changes and where we're going. And I think you probably heard a little bit about that in the other hearing about nursing home mergers and privatization. We're headed in a direction where, you know, we're getting the massive consolidation of healthcare. I don't need to tell you that, but the communities are not well-served. So the Attorney General's Office could do that type of research and look at the possible legal ramifications, you know, and I think their involvement's important.
Is that something that you folks have been calling for for a while?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Because it must be, I have not, I do not remember having this conversation about this particular, the process, this, I've had many conversations about certificate of need process, but I've never had one specifically that relates to the inclusion of the Attorney General. You're saying that there's other states in which this is a model?
Yeah, and we'd be happy to kind of, you know, work with some of the other advocacy groups to kind of look at that and provide some recommendations on how a better process can occur.
Please do, and because the, and last question on this topic. You've, so you've obviously, as you said, you've been trying to get this done for a while, or you've advocated for it for a while. Has there been vocal resistance? Has there been?
I think the whole planning process now, you know, frankly, is so top-down that it's very hard to, you know, to break in. And I think we know that a good example is the Hospital on Health Planning Council, which was meeting today during the day of your hearing. I mean, to talk about hospitals during COVID.
Timely.
Very timely, but it's just a great example. We need to have more consumer input there. We need to kind of break it down on a regional basis, and we need to kind of make the process more oriented toward community need rather than, you know, corporate need.
Gotcha. Thank you so much. I'm not sure if either of you ladies want to comment on this issue.
I don't have anything to add.
All right. Thank you so much. That is my time. Back to the Assembly.
And I actually have a question about the ventilator, but I'm also smart enough to know that two other hands are raised that might know more, and I'll learn something. So we're going to go to Missy Miller. Three minutes.
Hi, thank you so much. It's very interesting that we're discussing this because back at the end of March, I actually wrote a letter to Dr. Zucker, Department of Health, as well as the Attorney General, with a copy of those ventilator guidelines because I was hearing, you know, a tremendous amount of concern from the disability community over these guidelines. I never did hear from Dr. Zucker, but I was assured by the Governor's Office that there was absolutely no need for concern, that they would never ration or, you know, take away a ventilator from a person in need simply based on their evaluation versus a neurotypical or a more physically robust individual, that comparison that the guidelines reference very clearly, that there is no such thing, that it would be against the Americans with Disabilities Act. And so I was verbally assured that that does not happen, but I never did receive any response or reply to my letter to Dr. Zucker or the Attorney General. And Dick, I'll send you. I have the guidelines right here. I'm going to email them to you right now.
Thank you.
Well, I mean, it's interesting because our agency, along with Treatment Action Group, the National Age Treatment Network, Callan Lord, HEAT, and a variety of other organizations, also sent a letter to Commissioner Zucker, the Governor, and several other state leaders, and we got no response whatsoever about exactly that issue. And also, I mean, the other problem is, the problem is not, there are many good things in the guidelines. The guidelines are not across-the-board horrible. But there are, there's the issue that Jessica described in detail, and also the fact, as I mentioned earlier, that there are a variety of emergency services other than ventilator access, which are not addressed. And as has been reported several times since the pandemic started, line physicians are being asked, are being told that they will need to make decisions about who does and doesn't get care without any kind of uniform guidance, and which is a, other than an up-there burden--
The people who would have the better outcomes.
Well, that should be--
Have a person who has a physical disability or, you know, underlying, they don't have that rosy outcome as somebody who's just, you know, healthy with an acute condition.
Well, and that depends on how you define the length and nature of a rosy outcome. If the decision should be based on whether or not somebody's going to benefit from that intervention, not whether, looking at them as a person who may be missing a leg because of diabetes, the quality of their life or the long-term expectation because they've had perhaps HIV for 25 years is factored into that decision, which is why--
Thank you, Ms. Hanson.
People are concerned.
Thank you, Ms. Hanson.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I'm seven member, currently all members of the Senate to ask questions. Back to the Assembly.
We will continue my theory of asking smarter people to ask questions than I, and that would be John Salca for three minutes, who actually practices in the respiratory therapy field.
Thank you, John. I appreciate that, and I appreciate the time, and I appreciate the testimony of this panel. This is a question for Ms. Barlow. If someone does come in and they're ventilator-dependent and they have the home ventilator and it's taken away to put into a pool, if that particular person's status is not DNR, which is a do-not-resuscitate, isn't the hospital committed, just in case that person invariably goes into respiratory failure, isn't the hospital committed to start resuscitation proceedings, procedures on that patient?
Yes.
They get their ventilator taken away, they go into respiratory arrest, they're not a DNR, isn't the hospital committed to have full measures of resuscitation applied to that patient?
Yes, but in that case, the hospital is the reason that that person is going into respiratory distress. They extubated a person who's ventilator-dependent from their personal ventilator. You wouldn't take a diabetic's insulin away from them and say, well, this person deserves it more in this situation. This is someone's personal medical device, and they're dependent on it, and the hospital creating a more emergent situation and then fixing that situation, I don't think that they should necessarily be praised for that, though I certainly don't blame hospitals who are following these guidelines. Like I mentioned, they don't have anything else to go on at this point.
I agree, and coming from a perspective of a respiratory therapist, these are incredibly complicated machines, pieces of medical equipment. And unless you have a thorough orientation to a different or a particular type of ventilator, I don't know any clinician, at least that holds a license in New York State, that would chance trying to run something that they haven't been thoroughly acquainted with. So to put these ventilators into a pool and not orient those who are going to be running this particular piece of equipment is a recipe for disaster, and personally, I would refuse to do it. So it's something that I think is unrealistic to expect a medical professional to do and to ask a clinician to play God by taking a ventilator away from someone who's ventilator-dependent is just, that's just wrong. That's just absolutely wrong. That's just absolutely wrong. And I'm looking forward to reading those guidelines myself so that I can relay this to other professionals, other healthcare professionals that I know. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
And I will just close with my own comments on this issue, if it's okay with you, Senator Rivera.
Indeed, it is.
Jessica, I thank you for bringing this up. As a listener, I'm saying, well, wait a minute. This more likely, first of all, these ventilators, you just don't get off the shelf. They're not cheap. They are individuals' personal property. Their insurance probably paid for it. And as John pointed out very well, is that clinicians don't like to jump to other pieces of equipment, particularly if they're not familiar with it. It's not in the best interests of anybody. Number one, the patient, and of course, the clinician, and then, of course, the organization. So I just want to say thank you for bringing this up. Missy, I know you're going to send those guidelines to Richard, and I'd hope you'd share them with me as well because I just find it hard to believe that, although I recognize there could be a crisis, that people's personal property would be taken away from them at a moment when they're in desperate need. And with that, I will cease my comments and thank the panel for their participation today.
Thank you.
I will echo those thanks and wish you a very good rest of your day. As we-
Senator?
Yes.
I would just like to stress, the guidelines document is a very thick book. And I just want to reiterate what I said earlier. If you just say, well, here's the book, it's in there somewhere, that's not going to do me any good. What I need people to do is say, look on page 28, about halfway down the page, that's where the paragraph is that concerns us.
I could point you to pages five and six and pages 40 through 42. Those are the pages that we cited in our OCR complaint. So just off the top of my head now, those would be the most relevant.
Add in the email to me.
Sure, absolutely.
You got a second round there, Dick. Doesn't usually happen.
You've been here 50 years. You get a little benefit once in a while.
Thank you, folks. Now we move on to our last, but certainly not least, panel. And that is Dr. Eric Larson, Assistant Director of EMS and Emergency Preparedness for the White Plains Hospital.